If the agenda is amended, will be followed so all necessary and needed actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Business from the floor is welcome and allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, you must first be recognized by the mayor, second, state your name and address for the record, and third, you'll have no more than three minutes to state your comment or concern. There are copies of the agenda available at the back of the room. There's also a sign-up sheet if you wish to speak on floor items. Otherwise, please turn your cellphones off. Thank you.
All right. Take a motion to approve or amend the meeting agenda. We have a couple of amendments here, I believe. Council members, please turn on their microphones.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
But one item I would have is what Councilmember Bettinger had spoken to earlier is removing 1.11 under the consent agenda and tabling that to the June, moving it to the June agenda.
All right. Table 1.11 on consent agenda until June.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I'd like to pull out 1.8 under the consent agenda for a discussion.
So that becomes item A, B, E, F, G, council items. And then I would like to discuss item 1.5 as well, pull that one out. We didn't actually discuss that the other day. So that's item H. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'd like to pull 1-14 for discussion.
Anything else? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of approving the amended agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before the lieutenant gets up, I would like to address some things that popped up at our last workshop. And just a reminder for the council on decorum. This is from the mayor's handbook, just as a reminder to us all. Principles for Making Meetings Work. Simple principles for making meetings work. Let the presiding officer manage the meeting. Wait to be recognized by the presiding officer before speaking. Be courteous and civil. Limit debate to the discussion of the ideas. Do not make any personal attacks. And maintain decorum in the chambers. Do not have side conversations or disrupt the meeting through any of your words or conduct. And on the particular guidelines here, aggressive threatening conduct cannot be tolerated. Presiding officer should follow council's adopted bylaws to issue warnings when such conduct occurs and then order removal of any persons by the sergeant of arms. Presiding officer can remind the council member that the rules require all remarks to be addressed to the presiding officer alone. If the conduct persists, the presiding officer can rule the person out of order and follow the council's procedures for discipline. And then just a reminder, refrain from using offensive words, any threats, violence, or objectionable language, or in or against any council or against any member of the council. When council members violate rules of order, the presiding officer is authorized not to recognize the breaching council members' requests to speak and can limit their role in the debate until decorum is observed, declare the council member's actions out of order, and in severe cases, order removal of the council from the council chambers by law enforcement. And I know that that all sounds severe. That's, you know, the way that the handbook presents it, but I think we got out of order a bit. I know we got out of order a bit last time. And I think the meeting went over three hours. And so in order to keep the meetings flowing, I need to do a better job maintaining the decorum, maintaining the pace of the meeting, and we all need to do a better job. So I will remind people to be recognized by the presiding officer, wait until you're called upon, and when the discussion continues, if it gets too long, I will cut it off. But to continue to direct the comments back to the presiding officer so that we avoid interpersonal issues from arising. So I would appreciate that. You know, we've agreed upon that in the past, and that we can just maintain that. It would be better for all of us. So that being said, lieutenant, I'll take your report now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a brief report tonight in the sheriff's office for the month of April 2018. During the month, sheriff's deputies responded to 97 calls for service in the city. A couple of things of note, during one of our, actually several of the responses to calls at the Bar Nun facility, our deputies received information while they were trying to investigate an incident and then work with the staff at Bar Nun to get it resolved. What I read in the police reports after they were submitted was a little bit unsettling to me. I didn't like the response of the staff at Bar Nun. And I mentioned it to our patrol command staff, the lieutenant commander. They had also seen the same thing and actually called a meeting with the leadership of Bar Nun to get it resolved. I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I spoke with Commander Leesmeier from the patrol division, and it sounded like everything was resolved and things were... What was told to our deputies by staff-level people at the facility wasn't the wishes of the leadership at the facility, and that discrepancy has been involved. Kind of showed that Commander Leesmeier, if things squared away, as hopeful as both of them, I don't think we'll be having those issues in the future regarding that. And then just a few noteworthy calls for service during the month. On the 17th of April, several of our deputies responded to an animal neglect complaint in the 7600 block of Morris Lake Road. A utility worker had gone to the location to do some work and found several animals that appeared to have been abandoned at the home. The animals ultimately weren't abandoned. The owner was checking on them, although not in a timely enough manner. It was during the time where we were getting a lot of snow, and it had stopped snowing a couple of days prior to the call, and there were no tracks in the snow checking on the animals. They were able to ultimately locate the owner. They went inside, and Cory and I have spoken about this property since, but the interior of the residence was in very, very bad state of disarray, or was animal fecal matter and urine all over the interior of the home. And I believe the building inspector also was out to the property, looking at it to ensure its viability, and there are some concerns with some of the structure there since then. Cory worked with myself and with the fire department, so anybody that would respond to that location is aware of the possible structural issues. And our deputies worked with the owner and then one of the animal rescue facilities. They were able to take two dogs and get them... The owner decided to surrender two of the dogs and then was able to keep one that they had since removed from the site and took them with where they were going. So the situation was resolved. And the case was referred to the city attorney's office for review for any potential charges based on the living conditions for the animals. And a couple, just calls, one call of interest on the 17th. One of our deputies was called to a single-vehicle property damage crash in the 7700 block of Viking Boulevard Northwest. One of our off-duty deputies happened to be driving by after the crash occurred and found that the driver of the sole vehicle appeared to be intoxicated. Our off-duty deputy stopped and had that person wait at the scene until our on-duty staff arrived. That driver was ultimately taken into custody for DWI and tested a .17 alcohol concentration, which is more than twice the legal limit. And just one of the, kind of, I like to bring up a little note every once in a while about...
Lieutenant, can I just, in a case like that, so it's an off-duty officer, if that person decided not to wait, would there have been any violation? I mean, other than...
If the deputy identifies themselves, and most all of us have our credentials with us so we can properly identify ourselves, and if he gives them a lawful order to stay there, he can actually enforce that order whether or not he's on duty or not. So he could take legal action. Most times, it doesn't come to that, any situation I've ever run into off-duty. If you just, if you have a calm presence with you, most of the time, I haven't even had to tell people I was a police officer. I'll just stick around the scene and talk to them and wait for, make sure law enforcement's been called, and you don't even have to identify yourself. And there's been times when I've had to, but then I show them my identification and badge, and then I, at that point, now I'm on duty because I'm acting within the scope of my professional duty. So...
Thank you.
Yes. I'd just like to highlight a few things again. We went from winter to spring really fast, winter to summer, I guess, depending on how you're looking at it. But in one day, it wasn't in now-then. Over the course of a couple of different hours, we had multiple vehicle versus bicycle crashes on one of the first nice days. So it's just a reminder for people, people are going to be out walking with their pets, they're going to be out riding bicycles, and we just, unfortunately, some places, there's no sidewalks and bike trails, so we have to share the road with all those people, whether they're walking, bicycling, or whatnot. And just an extra reminder to be vigilant while you're out and about so we don't have those things happen. And then the last thing I have is I will be at the June 12th meeting. One of the sergeants from the patrol division will be taking my place. I'll be out of town. So that's all I have.
No orders, I hope.
No, sir. I've sworn them up. So I'll be back in July. No worries about that.
Thank you very much. Any council anything for lieutenant? Thank you, sir. Four items. Linda Colasa, you wish to speak?
Well, all I need to do is add on to the budget.
You've gotten your, you've turned in your paperwork?
I turned it in.
So at that point, I don't know if we need... Paul, you're the one who's pulling that out. Do you want any discussion at this point?
No, not at this point. I think we can handle that when we talk later.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Jeffrey Anderson. Councilmember Bryan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised lot split and conditional use permit for the property at 6538 213th Avenue Northwest.
Motion to second. Any new discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Rainville.
Under code enforcement, I would direct, I would move that council direct staff, internal staff, excuse me, to contact Mr. Guyer using the newly approved letter, asking him to contact the office to discuss whether or not he's conducting a business from his property. Depending on how that business is being operated, then internal staff would determine what type of, if any, additional zoning requirements are there, whether it's a home extended business or an IUP, or maybe he's just storing things and doesn't need anything.
Shall we have a motion?
I'll second for discussion.
We have a second discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I think what's left to be determined is whether or not he's operating a business from that location, and I think internal staff can make that judgment after having a conversation with him upon his responding to the letter that goes out. And from that point, then they can determine what it is that's needed, if anything, at that residence.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
We had previously made a motion for a couple of members of the council to actually do a site visit. I personally believe that site visit should still happen.
I would amend...
Councilmember Rainville.
I would amend my motion to include the previously designated council members to do the site visit. And maybe at that time, they can determine whether or not a business is occurring and what type and what is needed, if anything.
And to clarify, before we check with your second there, you're saying hold off on the letter until the site visit's done and then determine what to do.
Correct.
Councilmember Bryan, you...
For clarification, as I recall, that, and maybe it has changed, but was the two people we identified, the mayor and council member Rickert, or was there someone else? That's what I remember.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So you agree with that amended motion?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Isn't this what we have approved already? Are we amending that? They had a letter of audit, you guys decide. Let's see.
Councilmember Rainville, clarify?
I would clarify that I'm moving that the previously designated mayor and council member visit the site to determine whether or not he is running a business, whether or not he has relieved himself of the other animals that were there, that were in question, and that whether or not he is operating a business. And dependent on the determination of the type of business, then we would require him to apply for whatever type of permit is necessary, or, you know, whether it's a home-based occupation or if it's extended home, extended home occupation or an IUP, whatever it is that's required of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan. I think the comment was made by Planner Stockman at the end of the request for council action was requesting some direction so that a final decision could be made. So that's reiterating our previous motion that we're having to, having the council visit, then that's, I would say, then that would, if that's still in place and doesn't require remotion, then we can do that.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm willing to withdraw my motion, and we would just go back to the previously made motion that the council and the mayor and council member Rickert visit the site, make sure that the exotic or wild animals are no longer there. I would then make a second motion that says, or it'd be a first motion because we're just reaffirming an existing motion, that depending on what the mayor and council member find that the property owner is required to apply for whatever type of permit or, again, a home, extended-based, extended home-based operation or an IUP, whatever's required by what he's doing.
I would say that at this point, when we report back, then we can, we can address that.
That's fine. I withdraw my, all of my motions and...
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Do we want, does it seem to have a concern about the completion of this? Would we want to put a completion date to have this done by a certain date so that it's going to be better on both?
You know, if Liz wants to have a concern about completion dates, she's got a whole list of them there that she could concern herself with. I don't know why she's, she's taken a particular interest in this one. It does seem to be higher on her list than things that are a lot more serious than this. So I think Councilmember Rickert and I can take care of it. Unless we're putting on completion dates on the two pages, three pages of things she's got on there, just soon we get it done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
It sounds like Councilwoman Rainville has talked to Tommy, and I don't know, maybe he's concerned too, or would like, I would imagine he'd like to get this off, you know, slaying over his business, what he needs to do, so I'm sure he'd like to get it done soon, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Bettinger, I've had no conversations with Mr. Guyer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Being that we did have a previous motion and we did intend for myself and the mayor to go out there, and it still has not been done, I would like a completion date. So then everybody is aware of when we, you know... Again, we're acting on a previous motion that was made, and it still hasn't been done. We need to task ourselves to make sure it is done. And the reason that I believe it should have a completion date is because of the fact that we have made that motion and we passed that motion, and it still has not been done.
Well, it's just up to you and me, so let's, you and I decide it, so...
I've been...
You tell me when you're going to be in town, and we'll see if Mr. Guyer's in town, and we'll get out and do it. Hopefully, that can be done before the next meeting. Party season is upon us, so... And comment on the two of us setting up time with Mr. Guyer. I've got it noted here and turned sideways. Roden Bridge.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
At this time, based on our discussion at the workshop, the Roden Bridge Committee can just use the information to rework the five-year plan, and I would say at this time there's no motion required for this event or for this RCA.
First one there?
Yep.
Second one.
For the second one, Mr. Mayor, wanted to make a motion to authorize the Roden Bridge Committee to evaluate the, some patching in the area throughout the city and prioritize the worst of the spots and to authorize staff to get some codes together for patching and/or repairs of sub-bays.
All right. So that's a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion to second. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Just for clarification's sake, are you saying for staff and the Roden Bridge Committee to look for patching in the entire city or just the Rogers Lake?
Come up, and the entire city to come up with the top areas that require patch or sub-bays work.
Okay. Because the RCA was for Rogers Lake.
Originally written for Rogers Lake, but we had that discussion at the workshop to look at other areas, just to confirm that the pits in Rogers Lake are the highest priority at this time.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Northern Salt's $31,215.82 dust control proposal that is within our $32,000 budgeted item.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2018 crack ceiling bid proposal for ACS Asphalt Concrete Solutions in the amount of $35,154, which is within our $36,000 budgeted item.
Motion to second. Any discussion? If these people saw our budgets, they wouldn't come in proposing over the budget. And those that see our budget certainly are coming real close to what we allotted. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Council items, letter, a deputy clerk position update. I move, given it's apparent that the two council members serving on the hiring committee are deadlocked in their selections and efforts have been made to influence how the other council members view the candidates, that the city council terminates the current effort and directs the mayor to contact the League of Minnesota Cities to discuss what, if any, assistance they can provide to the city regarding a hiring process, and that the mayor is to report back to council the outcome of this discussion at the June 7, 2018 workshop.
I'll second for discussion.
Have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Discussion. Councilmember Rickert.
Councilwoman Rainville, can you elaborate or explain on what you are referencing to as far as anybody trying to persuade other council members?
Councilmember Rainville, would you like to respond to that?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we have in our possession two letters, one from our Rome River Construction, Andy Schrader Building Official, and the other from Liz Stockman from the planning company, our planner. I know at least one of the two reference that at council member Rickert's request that his observations of the existing temporary employee be provided to council. And I believe that that's undue influence. I don't know the background behind Ms. Stockman's comments, but I do believe that there's that interference has now tainted the process.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I, I'll tell you right off the bat, yeah, I asked Liz and I asked Andy both if they would write something in their own honest opinion, no bias from me, on what their perception of the candidate that's in the office right now is filling in. The reason I did that is based on comments from Planner Stockman at the workshop. I believe that these two people are city staff currently that we employ who have basically, they have no rhyme or reason on which candidate we choose. It doesn't impact them, but yet they work with the certain individual on a daily basis now, way more than any of us. So they could truly give us an honest observation of what they see, how that individual candidate performs and the tasks that they have done, and what they've done maybe above and beyond or different. The reason for this... are different. The reason for this, in my opinion, was so that we could be more educated because we don't see what the individual does on a daily basis. You know, I don't think any one of us could go in the office and, and know exactly what certain individuals do every day. If we get an opinion of somebody who works with them and sees what that person has already done in the short time that they've been there, I think that's beneficial. You can sit and you can look at a resume, you can do interviews all day long, but in my opinion and my past from hiring people, you, you really don't and can't get an exact honest representation of what they're going to do once they get into that position. I believe this was an effort to give outside opinions to what that individual has done thus far. Not persuading. When I talked to both individuals, I said, told them, you put it in your own words, however you want to say it. And I didn't persuade or pressure either one to write anything in any certain way.
Councilmember Rickert. How do you see this as different than directing staff? Where one individual council member is not authorized to direct staff? And, and I say that because both were approached by Ellen herself to make a recommendation, be a reference, and both declined. And they both chose after being approached by the council, representing only you without any direction from the council. They were both felt that the council was asking for this input. One was not necessarily the recommendation, but observation. The other one was obviously a recommendation. But they had both had decided not to do that prior to your involvement. How is that different than what we've, we've asked people not to direct staff accordingly? They're, they're taking, in my opinion, if they refused to do it previously and then hear from a council member and change their minds, I think that that is influencing certainly them to come forward. I think it also is something where they never asked, what is the city council looking for in this position or even what Cory is looking for in this position? You simply ask them to state their opinion on a portion of the job that was being done. So it becomes a tainted response because there hasn't been any discussion either with those two individuals as to what we're looking for or how we might say, based on this, how would you advise us with your interactions? It's not something the council had directed. And so I do have a concern with it, especially knowing that, that both had been approached and both had declined previously to offer that recommendation until approached by the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Number one, I didn't add or tell either one of them that they needed to do this. I didn't do it as a council member. I did it as part of the hiring committee to hopefully educate us all on what other people have seen. You know, this is, this whole process has gone, you know, it's gotten to the point where it's, it's, it's just unimaginable. And I don't, other than personal motives, Jeff, I don't understand and see what the issues we have. We have two of the three people on the hiring committee who recommended a certain individual and had specific reasons why they don't think another candidate would fit in. And again, based on comments that Planner Stockman made at the workshop, I wanted us as a council to have, you know, a broader, open mind of what others see another candidate or that candidate actually doing at this time. I didn't, I didn't say they had to do it. I told them if they don't want to do it, they didn't have to.
But, but my point is, they had been, they'd been personally requested by Ellen and they both had declined.
I have no control over that at that point.
Okay. But as requested by Councilmember Paul Rickert is how this letter starts out. They're taking that as some authority that somebody on the council is asking for their opinion. Now, we don't know what you said as far as, you don't have to do this, but, but it was done. One of our problems is this has become much more muddied than our last process because we all came in unanimous on both of our choices, the one who declined and the one who accepted. What we, we failed to do as a council because the assumption was we would all agree. We failed to make provision for what if we don't agree? We have two council members and a staff person. And, and so what is the criteria if we don't agree on the selected candidate? That was, that was a failure on our part because we didn't see it coming. And there, there obviously are, are strong opinions as to what it is we're specifically looking for. And, and there's a disagreement. But right now, it's one council member agreeing with one and one council member suggesting another. And my proposition was to put it to the council. And the council can say, if these are the two candidates you've taken it down to, let's interview those two candidates. Is an option. Councilmember Rainville has come up with something different. I don't know if you're proposing we start from scratch or whatever we do, but, but one of the options that we didn't discuss ahead of time, was if we're deadlocked, one council member voting for one candidate and one for another candidate, put it to the council and let the council decide.
Mr. Rick.
Is another, it was, was an option that would keep it moving along.
Mr. Rick.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, and, and which baffles me because the fact that you and I had a, had a meeting prior to our last workshop. The way that meeting was left was because you so chose at that time that we were going to go, you wanted to vary from what the job posting we had originally put out there. And that you thought that we should hire somebody in more of a, a different role. So you so chose to change what we were looking for as a council without it asking anyone else.
No, that's, that's.
Let me finish. I have the floor.
No, cause it's not accurate. I didn't change the job description. I said, of the candidates there, I believe a business background, business experience was valuable. I weighted that more heavily. I didn't change the job description. It's still the same duties.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, what gives you the right to interrupt me when I have the floor?
Because what you're saying is inaccurate. And, and that's where we, we got off track last in workshop. You can't say what's inaccurate because then it becomes, it clouds the issue. I did not change the job description. The job description remains the same. It would be the same job description given to the council saying, who do you feel is best qualified for this? I said, my personal emphasis, based on what we have learned previously, was to value a business, business experience as well. That was my personal bent.
So, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong then. Based on the conversation that we had prior to the workshop, based on you thinking, again, based, we were looking for a specific role to fill at first. After we were at a deadlock where we're at, you and I discussed the fact that we have two candidates. I expressed the reason why I preferred one over the other. We talked about that. You and I, did we not agree on the fact that we were going to go back and look through the resumes and see if that we thought anybody else in those group of resumes would fit the criteria of a bit more business-oriented experience that you had switched to? And that was the plan. And then come to the workshop on Thursday night, that had changed and then completely. And then you proposed that we were going to have the two candidates come in and talk to the council. Was that correct or incorrect?
I, when we had our meeting on that Thursday, I did say, you asked why my criteria was leaning one way or the other. And it was because of the business experience. And you're saying we're deadlocked here. Can you do something else? Go, let's go back. We discussed, let's go back, look through that. And if business criteria is, is that important, let's find another candidate. When it came to the workshop, we hadn't obviously done that within the week. And we were both going to look at the candidates. But I, I proposed to the council that we had a disagreement. How did the council want to handle it? I didn't ask, I said, one option is the council takes it and interviews the two candidates. But I left it wide open. You go back to the workshop. I left it open to what other solutions the, the council may propose.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Exactly like, like I said at the workshop. It doesn't matter. You're going to get this going right down the path you want it. And I, I have it already written in my notes of where we're headed. You know, and I said it before. This individual doesn't work with any of us on a daily basis. You're pushing a certain individual and in my belief, it's for personal motives. But yet we have two candidates that we allegedly are looking at. We had three, we interviewed three. One we all liked. We, if we had a choice, I would have no issues hiring that person. The problem was that her, she wouldn't come down to the salary we wanted to pay. So then we were left with two. One, two of the three preferred and one, one preferred. But yet, again, what I said on, went last Thursday at the workshop, we're not taking in, or some of us are not taking account into staff's opinion at all. And staff is the one who has to work with this individual on a daily basis. And in my opinion, staff should have an input. But yet, the way you want to lay it out, you're not letting staff have that input. And I think that's wrong.
Well, first of all, you, you can assume I have an agenda, but again, that's an assumption on your part.
And I invented that assumption.
You spent a lot of time, yeah, and you spent a lot of time on the workshop specifically addressing assumptions or, or we can't project what somebody else knows. You don't know that your assumption has anything to do with, with why I'm stating what I'm stating. But that being said, the, the option was to open it up to the council. Now, you're presuming what they're going to know. They don't know anything about these people. Other than, you know, what we've received here today. So the assumption that they can't make a good decision and that they aren't going to take into account staff's preferences. You need to understand, we were presented the three candidates by Cory. She picked the three candidates. And, and in the interview process decided this was not one of her, this particular candidate was within our price range, wasn't one that she would choose. Now, I can, I can assume why you don't want that candidate. You, I can assume why Cory doesn't want that candidate. You've stated why at the workshop, why you didn't want that candidate. And I'm just saying at this point, we have to get beyond this. We made a mistake because we didn't anticipate anything but a unanimous agreement. Now that we haven't had that, what do we do to proceed? Councilmember Rainville has proposed something. It's up to the council to decide how we, how we get out of this rut.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You're making comments and I'm making assumptions. Well, correct me if I'm wrong. You're making assumptions and you elaborated this whole council, your assumptions that the certain candidate that two of the three of us preferred wasn't capable of anything more than clerical. Correct or incorrect?
I didn't say wasn't capable of anything more. I saw that, that not as experienced as the other candidate. And that's my opinion. It's my opinion again.
Go back and look at the video then.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I, you know what, what, there's a couple of things that really bother me about this. And one is, you know, we get lambasted if we don't go, if we direct staff, if we go around the, the rules. I don't remember any conversation by council or any conversation by, of the committee coming back to council to say, we'd like to take and ask for letters of recommendation for the incumbent that's currently in place. Did we offer that? You, you want us to have information on, on your candidate, but did you offer the, that same ability to the candidate that maybe I would choose? I don't know because I have nothing to go by on that candidate, other than you don't think that party is appropriate. So you've now put those other candidates at a disadvantage by not affording them that same opportunity. And, and that, that bothers me. The other thing too is even when I look at these letters, the skill sets that are mentioned in here are basic clerical skill sets. There's nothing in here that tells me that this party has any specific skills that will take us over and above where we are now. I know you've made comments that she's running circles around Lori. Well, I don't know that. And I don't see that from these letters. And I guess, but for me, the, the most is this development, this intervention, in, in, yeah, this, and I can't think of the word, but it's, this development's taught me a good lesson. That for the betterment of the city and its employees, the hiring process needs to be fair, impartial, and that an employee should never believe that due to the actions of an elected official, an employee, or contrasted, contracted staff, that they're beholden to them due to that party's influence. And that's one of my, that, that's my driving force behind terminating this process, going to the League of Minnesota Cities and asking for their assistance. How do we get past this? And I think that's the only fair way to do it for the candidates that are in contention for the council, for the existing staff, and for the residents to make sure that we do the job right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Two things again. As far as me asking for somebody, you know, to refer to how any one of these other candidates has done in a job in our office, I can't. Nobody else has been in that job right now. Again, like I said, the only reason, liner Stockman sat there on, on Thursday night at the workshop and stated exactly, you know, her feelings and she wanted to add her input. I didn't ask for that. You know, so basically what, by doing what I did, I was asking her to more or less write it down on people, piece of paper so it is on public record. And then, and then the assumption was then, okay, you know, probably wouldn't be a bad idea and it would educate us all to get the opinions of people who have worked with this candidate to see what their opinion is. Again, they've worked with us, with that candidate. We haven't. Again, you sit down and interview anybody and there's a ton of people out there who interview really well. And once you get them in the job, they stink.
All right. So that part you repeat because you've already said that. I think it was very uncomfortable at the workshop. liner Stockman, if you, if you listen to the, the recording of it, was tentative saying, you know, maybe I can get us off this because it was very tense at the time. And it, what you're saying is, the end justifies the means. I wouldn't appreciate it if an individual council member went to somebody else on staff and asked their opinion unsolicited or undirected by the council. But in this case, it was important. And that's, that's one of the, the significant issues. It's also put us in a precarious position because by doing that and soliciting those, and, and again, the, the one admitted it was requested, the other one didn't admit it in writing, but admitted it was requested. And for, for them to go on record, and, and it needs to be clarified, Mr. Schrader was simply making an observation, not a recommendation, but it now puts the council at odds with their staff if they don't do exactly as you propose, with the entire staff. And so, in, in the same way, they're saying, we're not being sensitive to staff by having a discussion. Now, we're insensitive to what that does to contracted staff by having that discussion and saying, whatever the council thinks, whatever the council majority may think, if it's different than your opinion, you've already voiced your opinion. What if the council doesn't agree with staff? Where does that leave them? It puts, it puts them in a very awkward position and it puts us in an awkward position. And they both admitted it was an awkward position, but they did it because a council member.
Mr. Mayor, again, I'm going to emphasize the fact that when I had the discussion with either one of them, I specifically stated, and you can ask them yourself.
I already asked them. And they said, because a council member asked, I felt I needed to do it.
I specifically.
Now, whatever, you can say they, well, I'm just telling you what they said.
Well, that's not the conversation that I had, Jeff. So you can, again, you can spew it how you want. It's not, it's not.
Okay. You told them they didn't have to, but they felt they're responding to a council member. Because they both had been requested to be a reference and they both had declined. And that's when the references come on the resume.
And I didn't ask them to be a reference either, so.
No. Ellen did. Ellen. No. Ellen did. Ellen had asked them to be references, and they thought better of it, because they thought it was inappropriate to weigh in on it. About 10 days ago. Councilmember Bettinger.
Just want to make a couple of quick points. One is, my belief is when we appointed this committee, we appointed three members. And that's, so you have an odd person, so that it can't be a tie. They can make a recommendation. So I believe that this committee can and should make a recommendation. And then if the council chooses to change that recommendation, fine. The other point I want to make, Liz gave a recommendation at the workshop for the one candidate. And she offered right here, that night, if you watched the video, to put it, she said she would put it in writing. She offered it up. So really, it wasn't solicited by a council.
It was solicited. She may have said she'd do that, but she was called and requested by an individual council member, not authorized by council. The council didn't say, Ms. Stockman, we would appreciate if you'd do that. We had that opportunity. If we wanted to, we could have said, hey, that's a good idea. Would you put that in writing for us? The council didn't choose to do that. One individual council member chose to do that. Now, the committee has made a recommendation.
Can I finish?
No, the mayor needs to talk.
Another, from my understanding, she was saying she was gonna put the letter together. And I'm hearing two different stories from two, from two, to other people. So from my understanding from Thursday night's meeting was, she gave her recommendation verbally, and she said she was going to put together a letter for her, when I was sitting right next to her here. So if something changed after that meeting, I don't know. But that's, that's what I heard, and that's what I believed was going to happen.
So she was going to, or she could. Big difference. If she said I could, and the council didn't say, would you? Or she said, I'll put that in writing, and the council said, that's a good idea. The council didn't weigh in on that she could or would, and you have to go back and see specifically what she said. Whether she did or not, she was asked by a council member who's part of the committee to do so. And that's the conflict here. Now, the committee has made a recommendation. A council member, two members of the council have made their recommendations, and the clerk has made his recommendations. So the council does have two candidates recommended. One by two people, one by one person. And that's what was, was available to the council to say, what do you want to do with that? Do you want to say, now, we don't want either now at this point, we want to start over? We want to consider the two, and we want to proceed by interviewing the two? Or do as Councilmember Rainville's proposed, and work with the league to come up with something amenable? But there are recommendations for the council to consider. They just differ. But the committee has said, we've got it down to two candidates, the same cost structure.
No, Mr. Mayor, that's incorrect. The majority of the committee has one individual.
And, and the council is the hiring body. So the two people on the.
Correct. But you just stated that the committee had two candidates. That's incorrect. The committee, the majority of the committee has one candidate.
The people on the committee, yes.
People on the committee has one, the majority of the people on the committee has one candidate, not two.
Okay. And that's where we needed to have some guidelines, because we didn't anticipate a split vote. And what you're saying is, as the hiring body, that there's, there's the equivalent authority on the appointed position as there is with the two elected positions. And I'm saying right now, the elected officials have a disagreement, and they each, at this point, are recommending different people. And the weighted factor in that is the clerk has agreed with one of the elected officials. But we didn't say, what's going to happen if, if the elected, if the three people on the committee don't all agree? Because it didn't happen before, when we did this before. And that's, that's part of the quagmire we're in right now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have a motion on the floor, and I call it the vote.
Clarify the motion one more time.
The motion is, I move, given it's apparent that two council members serving on the hiring committee are deadlocked in their selections, and efforts have been made to influence how the other council members view the candidates, that the city council terminates the current effort and directs the mayor to contact the League of Minnesota Cities to discuss what, if any, assistance they can provide to the city regarding a hiring process. The mayor is to report back to the council the outcome of this discussion at the June 7, 2018 workshop.
All right. Motion's been called. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Old Viking Boulevard, we decide at this point not to make any considerations for larger parcels, but to proceed with the original plan. Does anybody have any difference in opinion on that? All right. Recycling Center.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have an additional item under the deputy clerk position update. And the council can ask me to bring it next month, but I would move that our planning and building officials submit an invoice covering their time spent responding to the request of Councilmember Ricker relating to the hire of the deputy clerk.
Oh, it said they did it at no charge.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Should we make a motion to act on assessments of Old Viking?
Start scanning. I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion to keep it as unanimous as.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now can we move to the Recycling Center? Vote for, lock it in at overhang. I think at this point, nobody's figured out where the money's coming from, so this, my opinion needs to be tabled.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Does the, the Anoka County recycling issue, would that impact us at all?
It could. But that's why I think, we aren't going to resolve that tonight, because that has to be something the county would have to reverse.
Right. I'm just wondering if, I'm just seeing if in my head that they would theoretically go together or not, and probably the answer is no, so.
If the Anoka County changes their opinion, we would then be able to bring this back up with a funding source. If not, we would have to come up with some other funding source to make it possible for Joe to keep that clear. If not, we'll have to do a better job shoveling. All right, so table the Recycling Center bid. That was the motion. Did we have a second on that?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to deny the request for contracts, street sweeping.
Second for discussion.
Motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Bettinger, we were talking at the workshop that we should be able to take care of that with our existing sweeper. Is that correct?
Yes.
So would you be amenable to, to amend your motion to include having staff go out there to use the tenant sweeper as appropriate in the neighborhood?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
They do that already every year.
I just didn't know if we.
Every spring, they got, they gotta go through and sweep all the streets. And then the curb and gutter areas, they use the tenant. The rural areas, they use the side boomers on the John Deere.
I just don't know if there was any clarification that we were using the tenant on streets or just using the regular sweeper.
I suppose if we want to add that to it, that they use a tenant on the curb and gutter areas and, and the John Deere boom sweeper on the rural sections, that's fine. I can add, I'd be willing to add that.
That thing plugs up pretty quick.
What's that?
I said, that thing plugs up pretty quick. We used it out here, found the recycling center, and we dumped it. Four times. One time, we had to use the forklift on it.
The big tenant? I think you used it, that's the second one. There's a bigger one in the shop, bigger one in the shop, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I guess the, the solution we're recommending doesn't address the complainant's issue in that the sand is ending up in his yard. And I, I mean, I don't know how we go forward with that, but I understand his concern. I've talked to him a couple of times about it. And I'm just saying, our discussion here doesn't address his concern, which is the sand in the yard. That's.
And interesting, last year, actually, Joe went out with the sweeper and swept it out of people's yards back into the street. Because they're trying to figure out how to get the stuff that had been pushed into the yard over the winter. And they were able to use the sweeper to push it back on the street. It doesn't address that. How do we address that so the staff doesn't, just to put it into people's yards if they're mowing out to the edge? Councilmember Bettinger, you had talked about, we actually do the edging of the road. We bring things in. Are they able to do it delicately enough to not spread it all over people's lawns and keep it on the edge of the road?
It's swept off, just off the edge of the bed, onto the gravel shoulder. Some of the dust, yeah, maybe going into the yards, but at that point, it's dust. The sand just is swept off the edge of the blacktop. And that's, like I said, that's, that's an acceptable practice.
All right. So Councilmember Rainville, you have talked with the resident in particular that complained on this?
I'm assuming it is this, this person, yes. There's no name on it, but I'm assuming it's him.
So I would, we've got a motion on the floor here. Any other discussion on this in particular, and I'll address that separately.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Based on our conversation at the workshop, if we're in, I'm just thinking, if we're sweeping along a shoulder where there is like woods or weeds, then the John Deere sweeper would be adequate. But if we're in an area where this, if we're in an area where the sand, where the sand is coming up for the grass, then is that, we're saying that it's not necessarily all curb and gutter? Well, yeah, in spots it wouldn't be. Would it be appropriate to identify those spots to use the regular tenant sweeper in those areas? I know some people, some people want, some people worried about it, others aren't.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Then you might as well get an estimate to sweep, contract out sweeping 34 miles of blacktop road, and put it in your budget. And you're going to find out, there's, there's a half mile about, a little over a half mile, that's 600 bucks. So do the math. It's not in the budget today, but if you want to talk about it during budget time, we can. But I think it's going to cost the city a lot of money. And it's, it's not needed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
Based on the workshop, it is understood why it's done in the curb and gutter, because we don't want that sand getting into the gutters, because then the gutter's got to clean it out. Where there is no curbing in gutters, it's, I don't believe it's necessary otherwise. Like I said in the workshop, we're opening a huge can of worms. I guarantee that if we pass and say the tenant's got to sweep, you know, on certain areas of the roads without curb and gutter, I'll be the next one to complain. Because I put, my grass goes right up to the road, and I don't want dirt in there. But I know that's just the nature of the beast, and I deal with it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I didn't ask for any change in how the motion was stated or anything like that. I'm just saying that that doesn't address the complainant's issue. That's all I said. And I.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Part of this is, that's why it feels like country. So it's, it's dumb, and we have a rural section of the road.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And I understand that, but it does not prevent somebody from asking something. Whether it feels like country or not, it doesn't prevent somebody from being able to ask something of council.
Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I would move, since we've had several complaints from a resident on 210th, that Councilmember Rainville and Councilmember Bryan go and try and be proactive in that, that we are going to announce we're going to do street cleaning, take a look at, if there's any particular complaint that we can work with Joe on to minimize that, so that we can be proactive and try and say, we are listening. And what can we do short of renting a street sweeper? But have two council members work with the resident and with Joe to minimize any offending action while still allowing the staff to do their work.
I would second that.
And motion is second, discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Vinegar Lake, Resolution 2018-12.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-12.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Schedule Special City Council Meeting, May 15. And this is to approve plans and specs for Old Viking Boulevard, adopt a resolution at that time, and to establish a date for the assessment hearings.
I'd second that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
As stated in the workshop, I will not be in town that week, but I'll put on record my vote is for it.
The second question would be the assessment hearing. And right now, Bob and Shane say they're available June 11th and 13th. We have a council meeting on the 12th. So we could make that part of this motion to, or, I guess actually, we'll take that up on May 15. But if you want to check your schedule on that, so you can also weigh in on that.
What dates are these?
11th and 13th of June. All right, so special meeting, May 15. Are we going to do this just before the road and bridge? So we talk about 6:30?
Somewhere.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Farmers Market.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ricker.
I just, again, based on what we talked about at the workshop, you know, I was questioning the facts, you know, with, and again, go on record, again, as I did at the workshop, that I'm, I'm all in favor of the farmers market. I think it's a good thing. You know, everybody raised about it in the community. It's just a matter of, you know, from the aspect of us having to prove their budget every year, you know, is, is there a way that they can go out and do it on their own? And based on the workshop, it was understood that the primary and only real reason that we run it through the city is for insurance. And based on information that we were provided, it looks like the farmers market does already get a policy. So the question at hand is, are we double covering by providing them with an insurance plan? Number one. And if, and if we are, then do we really need to make it a, a city-run thing, so all finances and whatnot run through the city? So all finances and whatnot run through the city? And I guess to go along with that, then obviously, you know, i- if it is, my request, based on the workshop, is, again, I don't, I don't care which way we do it, I don't mind if the city has to pay the insurance, if that's the way you've gotta do it. But then I would expect that when they come to us with a budget, just like everything else others asked for, we handle it the same way. So everything that we're approving on their budget is detailed, so we know exactly what it is. You know, and there's some items, I know we've got some, more information tonight on some items, but you know, there's other items, in my opinion, that aren't detailed enough as what has been asked for from others in the past. So I guess the, the key, number one question is, being, the farmers market is currently getting an insurance plan now, is that enough to cover them and do we really need to have that secondary policy covered by the city?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I don't, did, Linda, did you receive this information from Cory on the insurance questions that were asked and answered?
Um, I, yes, I did. And I, what my response was, I asked who was asking that question and who's, because I had one offender.
Linda, would you come up to the podium, please? And introduce yourself and your address, please?
Yes. Linda Colasa, one-eight-eight-six-seven Paradise Street Northwest. And I am the market coordinator and I'm happy to answer your questions. I did receive that email from Cory. I asked who it was from, because if it was a vendor, I wanted to field that so that she did not have to deal with that. We do have insurance that comes through the Minnesota Farmers Market Association that is a product liability only. It does not include the property, which we also have bills that we have to do an addendum to, to make sure that bills doesn't get in trouble for anything that may occur on the property. So there are actually two different types of insurances that are through the Minnesota Farmers Market Association versus what's through the city. As far as the city handling this information, we had decided when we had first come on board that we would go through the city. There is a lot of reasons for that. One is accountability. Two is when vendors are looking to get an application or to turn in money, there is a place to go. Because I am not at home twenty-four hours a day, not that the office is open twenty-four hours a day, but it gives, it gives the structure of the office, it gives the accountability of the office. We are the city of Nowlanders Farmers Market, and so therefore we want to make sure that we do the market well, and we want to represent the market well, so we try to keep everything coherent with the market and the city. As far as the other question, how much does the, the staff participate in this? We do all the budget, we do all our figuring out what needs to go on with the market, we present it so that there's no work that has to be done by the city staff.
Councilmember Rickard, you were saying that there were questions that you had that, that seemed to be things we required of other people not of the farmers market? Was there something specific you were had, had in mind there?
Well, again, you know, based on, on what we talked about at the workshop, it's, in other projects that have come forth to council, we had asked, you know, that we have all the information before we can vote. And I would expect that we asked that of everything. Prior to tonight, there's, on the budget, there's chairs. Well, we didn't know what kind of chairs, work chair, whose chairs are they, you know? So we had no information on that. And again, this is, this is nothing directly to what you're doing.
What you're saying is absolutely true. If there's a RCA that comes to you through the, through the city council and, and I'm asking for approval, I would like to do it correctly. So, you know, whatever I need to do on my end to make certain that the packets that you're getting for the RCA is complete and, and the way that it's required, I'm happy to do that. I'm on a learning curve because I'm, RCA's, last year I think was the first time it was introduced. So I'm happy to do the RCA's exactly how they need to be done. If I'm doing them incorrectly, do what you're doing, tell me I'm doing them wrong. I'd be happy to fix that in an instant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
And again, that's, that's all I'm asking. If, if the council is asking for any one of us or anybody else to have specifics that everybody should follow that, you know, and again, extreme graphics signs for three-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. We don't know anything about the signs. What we know, vague details. But again, in past, you know, when we wanted to do the other signs that we did for you know, different projects going on within the city, we needed to know what kind of signs, what kind of posts, what kind of lettering, what size lettering. Again, I'm not, I wa- I want us to do everything the same way.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The first that I, because of schedules, the first I saw of Linda's RCA was what was in the packet. And I knew there were gonna be questions because it wasn't complete. So we tried and tried to get together and, and be able to answer questions. We were able to do that over this weekend, many late night texts and emails. But I promise going forward that the RCAs will be detailed and you will have enough information. I, you know, the, the chairs, they were from Costco, they were for the volunteers to use. The courier, there's an ad that goes into the courier. Extreme graphics, they're aluminum signs, three different sizes.
Well, Councilmember Rainville, let me ask, rather than going through all that, we've, we've had a couple of items presented here tonight, the chairs and the, the tongue jack. Was there anything else that wasn't self-explanatory that, that at this point, anybody on the council needs clarification on?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickard.
But again, I'm going back to the fact that in the past with other RCAs that either the council was presented, or a member of the council was presented, or an individual, if we didn't have all that information, other council members would, would not allow us to make the RCA. There's information still here that we don't have all the details to. So in my opinion, this should be tabled until we have all those details.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Right. So, so Councilmember Rickard, what additional, would you please email me what additional information you're looking for? And we will provide that.
Email Cory.
Or email, well, you could, yes, email Cory.
Cory can send it out to the council.
Specifically what it is you're looking for, Linda and I will work together and we will provide that information.
But you're in agreement that this will be tabled then until June?
Yes. Is it just the signs, is that the one you're looking for?
I'll go back through and specifically look, but again, nothing against the farmers market, I'm for it. But if, if we're required, or a certain individual required us to do some things one way, everything should be done that way.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And again, I, I've stated too, that we are in, in agreement with that. This one wasn't up to par, and we will make sure that that does not happen again. And again, if you will.
I'm Larnie Kirk, I'm figuring this out.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'll second the motion to table.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work in making the farmers market successful. Okay, recycling agreement. The question I have on this is if we sign this as is, does it negate our opportunity to go back and renegotiate with it? And, and I would like for, as, since Mary, Councilmember Rainville is the liaison, and I told Cory that I would be willing to go and pursue with the county, with our commissioner for this area, and with Sudal, to see if there's anything we can do to try and recover those funds that we lost out on. And so I'd rather not sign this until we try that. I wouldn't say we've already signed the document, we've agreed and nullify our chances of getting some of those funds so that we can finish up on the recycling. So I would move that Councilmember Rainville and myself work with the county to see if there's any remedy to this before we sign it.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Kind of on that tangent, and I apologize, is there, for, I was just thinking of it after Saturday. And I haven't even had a chance to, to ask Cory about it. Is there a timeframe to finish the concrete work at the recycling center?
I, it's not on the schedule yet, I'll, I'll have to, um,
There is, the, the sand is. Yeah, the sand is starting to cavern underneath the drives into the garages. I'm worried about the voids that are settling in there. Joe said something on Saturday about, they still have to move the bollards too, I think that might be part of it. But if that sand settles in, they're gonna have to sandjack that or something, so we don't. Because you've got heavy trucks falling through those doors, you don't wanna crack that concrete. All right. I'll get into that last one. I, I, I wanna, just have a, a quick question. I thought of it at our workshop last week, but we have multiple zoning issues coming up in the next planning and zoning. Have we resolved who's responsible for signs? Is that something Liz, when she knows there's land use changes coming up, who, who's responsible to put out and take in signs?
Mr. Mayor, you, council hasn't directed anybody.
Okay. So it would seem we have, we have four very large parcels that are coming up for discussion. And if there's a time to use our signs, this would definitely be it. So, um, I think we need to come up with that before our, our planning and zoning this month, when all those parcels will be discussed. So I apologize, it's not an RCA, but it just hit me as we were talking about this earlier. Hit me at the workshop, but it hit me here, that I assumed that there was something in place. But being as a planner is the only one that knows those are coming up. Somehow she's gonna have to communicate it, and then the council has to decide, is that something that our public works department puts out? And since I don't wanna pay Liz to do that, I would make a motion that when Liz knows there's gonna be a land use issue coming up before the P and Z, what she's gonna know at least ten days before the meeting, that she direct, that she give that information to Joe so he can put out the signs.
Second.
All right. And motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Item one-fourteen, RCA discrepancy in how information provided by council members was handled.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I would like to comment on this. I don't know if you want a motion to either up it or down it before, or, but I, I, I just wanna com- make comments on it, I guess. Whether you want me to do that now or after, there's been a motion to second.
Well, I think there needs to, needs to be a motion. And if the council wants to engage it, then, then we can second it and, and have a discussion.
Make your motion, Andy, I'll second. I'll make a motion to the NIA, the approval of this RCA. I'll second.
All right. So we have motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'd just like to go back on this a ways. It was been brought up, I mean, this accuses of misinformation and maybe there's some on there, and, or some from the past, but there's some on this as well, too. In the past, it was brought up about wages were not discussed during the budget workshops. That's not true. It was brought up and, and a question asked. There wasn't, nobody seemed to want to discuss it, but it was brought up for discussion at our workshop meeting. Reviews was on our November agenda, but wages was part of that discussion. Every time you discuss reviews, a lot of times wages or, or raises are part of that discussion as well. And that was, them discussions were held in November, December, January, February, on and on. And to this day, neither one has been approved. Reviews have not been completed yet, to this day. The council has not done their job. Employees have had, it'll be one raise in the last eleven years. The other thing I wanted to comment on, following these emails and the management stuff, these, by the emails, staff was asked to do different things. Staff had done everything that was asked them by the council person, everything. But yet, they're being called out on this RCA for not doing their job. And I just have one more point to make. And back when we were discussing raises, it was said publicly that we had no money in the budget. But yet, we have RCA here tonight saying there was twenty-two thousand left over in the Road and Bridge fund. So we did have money, like I had said, that we could have gave our employees a raise. That's all I have to say there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
My RCA, um, Councilmember Bettinger, you sent a memo to staff. That memo ended up in the council packet. And that memo accused me of something that I didn't do. You can twist words how you want, but the topic that I was referring to at the February meeting was not as you portrayed. So I responded to your memo. Sadly, I assumed that that response, then that went out to council, would be the end of it. Question asked, question answered. But no, when the public copy of the agenda went out, your memo was in there. And again, that memo was not on, nor was it to begin with on the council preliminary copy. Your memo was not listed as a topic. And I, I am hard pressed to try to remember a time where something came with the packet that was not associated or not included as an agenda item. And so I feel that my response to you should be part of this packet as you were given the opportunity to have your response part of the packet. Yes, I didn't ask it to go in the packet because I felt that it was complete. Silly me. I thought I'd be treated in the same fashion as you were. And I, I, I learned a good lesson because I, I was treated differently and I think that's wrong. It, it was the second time that you had made accusations about something I either said or how I voted. And the last time was the issue of the wage study. And I responded to that, provided the information that said what you said was not correct, and that was the end of it. I never heard another word.
Councilmember Rainville, if I can attempt to clarify here, there's, there's two different things. One is the content of the email that you attempted to respond to, thinking that your response would be in, but you didn't request it to be in, assuming it would be in. And, and therefore, when it wasn't, you created this to make it formal, to make sure you were included as part of the package.
Mr. Mayor, I, I never expected my response to be in the packet. And the reason I didn't is because it was not an issue on the agenda for council's consideration.
Okay, so can I clarify, did you expect neither email would be in the packet?
Correct.
Okay. So when you found out one was, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but if you... So when you found out one was, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you believed that to be officially part of the packet, you went through this process?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
At that point, the packet was out, there was, I had no ability to get my side of the story into the packet, and so this was my way of being able to do it. It's a month later, but given how things went out, that's my only option.
So two different things here. One is the content of the original email, and your response at email, and the content of what you've put in this RCA. We agreed at the workshop that we would like the RCA's to be presented for council action going forward. And so, in this case, what I would like to do is if we can nip this and say, as a council, how do we want to address things? If an individual council member has an opinion, and they want to put it in the form of an email, is, to give Cory direction, is she obligated to put everybody's opinion in there? And if so, not have it on the agenda? So if it's an opinion piece, how do we want to handle that? And if it is to be put in there, and there's a response, then equally, if we allow one, we should allow the other. And so that Cory has direction, and so she's not having to pick and choose about whose do I put in there. I think that really requires clarification from the council. You know, as far as who said what, when, and all of that, to me, the bigger issue here is, this could have been nipped had we addressed it at the time, or even addressed offline. But how do we want Cory to respond when individual council members come with an opinion piece, and it's chosen to be put in the packet, which goes out to the public and to the residents, without response?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
The difference is, she wasn't treated differently. The difference was, I asked for mine to go with the packet, and I guess she did not. So that's a difference. She weren't treated in a different way. So that's just an accusation, and that's false.
Mr. Mayor.
And the other thing is, I would like to withdraw my motion to this point, so.
All right, so motion withdrawn.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would like to move that my response to Councilmember Bettinger, so this RCA and the documentation be entered into the official record, which assures me I'm afforded the same consideration as Councilmember Bettinger, when his information was entered into the city record.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
In going through and reviewing all this, too, you know, there's several, this along with several other cases where, in my opinion, I saw that individual council members were directing staff. You know, you made an accusation tonight that I tried to sway an opinion of council by actually asking staff for something. There's example after example of other council members directing staff on a weekly basis. So if we're gonna hold one to it, we need to hold everybody to it.
And what specifically would you be referring to?
It's, I have to go back through, because I was reading through all the emails that were in conjunction with that, but Jeff, we all know it happens time after time, so, again, my point is, if you're gonna hold one council member to it, you need to hold everybody to it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The only thing I asked was that this be forwarded to council, and we do that, that's our way of being able to get information to the council. I didn't direct council to put this in the packet, so that needs to be directed to the council member that did do that. I did not do that. I'm asking via an RCA to do that, because that's the way to get council to agree to something as an RCA.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
I think to your statements, that there should be some clarification of what does and isn't able to be included in the packet. I would expect if the packet has a piece of information that doesn't have any, either an action item or attached to it, or had one previously, then there comes, to me anyway, there comes some question about why this would or should be included in the packet. So I'm certainly open to what you're discussing, as far as how to proceed going forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bett.
I call for a vote.
So the motion is to accept the RCA as presented, to make it officially part of the record? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
To the point you were making, Councilmember Bryant, I think if there is an action item, it should come before the council, if it's informational. Cory typically sends that out to the council as emails. If in getting the emails as a communication, that is presented to council by Cory, that if there is an action, it should come from that, then it should go through the formal process. But if we're gonna, you know, attach it here, again, looking at the letter from Councilmember Bettinger, it doesn't say in here, would you please make this part of the packet? I mean, it says no more than, than, the request from Councilmember Rainville was to please forward to council. The other one is just a statement, and Councilmember Bettinger, you're saying you just asked verbally to have it added to the packet? And I think it would have been better handled, send it to the council for discussion, and if it needed to be a discussion item, we put it on the agenda. And I think if we have that as a guideline, if it needs to be a discussion item, put it on the agenda, so that we can understand that. If it's simply communication, you know, clarification, communication, send it to Cory, so she can send it out to all council. And if council sees that, I need to have this discussion further, then put it on the agenda, so we can all come prepared to discuss it. This is one of those that came up without opportunity to discuss it further, and without any of the other details, so. Does that make sense to the council, to say, general communication goes to Cory, goes out to council? Is there specific action that's generated because of that general communication, and it becomes an agenda item, so we can all come prepared? And I will move that as direction. So motion to second, any discussion? Saying and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Under new items, I would adjust the request for council action due to comments of Councilmember Bettinger at the workshop. I move that the city council review the attached documents, provide their comments to the city clerk prior to June 4th, 2018, for inclusion into the June workshop agenda. City council or their designee, excuse me, the city clerk or their designee will compile the components for review at the June workshop.
I'll second that.
So let me get this straight, you're saying you have comments by June 4th, and the staff's gonna have them all compiled by June 7?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be gone on vacation for several days in June.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think we should have staff comment on them as well, because its rules are gonna be affecting them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
No, I guess, I'm kind of a little bit lost, too, is why we started here, you know? We as a council didn't, you know, discuss, you know, what we thought we should do, or where we want to go with, in updating the city policies. I guess, in my opinion, I would have preferred us as a collective group to, you know, look at policies that may have more impact on the city, and collectively then make a discussion and decision on what policies we want to look at first. Granted, I've been one pushing hard that we need to go through all the city policies and get them updated, but again, why this one first, I don't know. I think there's other ones that are probably more pressing than this. And I wish it would have, this RCA would have been written in a format where it would have been requested for the council to just ask that, you know, say, hey, you know, being policies need to be updated, what should we be focusing on? And get a concise, collective, you know, vote from the council, rather than choosing this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I agree with Councilmember Rick. We've had many conversations about policies and procedures, but yet, nothing's been brought forward. I chose to start with this one, because there had been considerable amount of hours put into the effort already, and I thought it would be a good one to start with, because majority of the work is done. If you want to bring forward other policies and procedures, please do, but all we've done is talked about doing it. I've at least taken a step to do it, myself and Councilmember Bryant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Yeah, and I'm not disputing that, again, it's just, I, my personal preference was that we would have given the option of a discussion prior to, to figure out which ones the council as a whole deemed we should start with.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And to your comment, Councilmember Rick, you had every right to bring forward that suggestion at any of the previous council meetings. And it hasn't occurred, and Councilmember Bettinger tells us over and over, we don't get anything done, we don't get anything done. So then I'd like to try to get something done. And I picked the one thing that had already had considerable amount of time and effort put into it, and I thought that hopefully we could work through it and get something accomplished, and then we can go on to others. So I look forward to your list of which policies you'd like to see us do. And then Councilmember Bettinger, I'm more than happy to include staff providing input.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rick.
Just one last thing, being Clerk LaDucey's gonna be off in June and stuff, are we still looking at June 4th as having all our comments in? That doesn't give us a whole lot of time either. And I know, like I said, the week of the 15th, I'm gone on business all of the time, so. I guess, again, it's, hadn't been a hotbed until now, I don't know why, and again, if we're gonna do it, let's do it, but June 4th seems to be pushing it quite a bit.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I did not know, I was not aware of Cory being on vacation, so I am willing to move this, that the information is provided to council by July 2nd, for placement on the July 5th workshop agenda, and hopefully council will be able to get it to Cory sooner than later, as far as July 2nd.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I won't be at the workshop, July 5th, I'll be on vacation, that whole week.
And Mr. Mayor, if we have to have the packets out in a second.
Actually, no, the packets are out the week before that.
Week before.
The 2nd is Tuesday.
The workshop is the 5th.
The 5th, and so Wednesday, actually, the 2nd is Monday?
I'm looking at the wrong calendar.
Fourth is on Wednesday, so it would have to be.
It would have to be, so by June 25th.
June 25th. Sadly, there's a week prior. Go back down again, Dan. I was gonna say, something's wrong with you. It's June 25th, is it the Monday before?
Yeah.
It's the Monday before, there.
That work for the council?
It would give council five full weeks, plus four days. Yes.
To start with the work that's been done, reviewing the comments to staff by Monday, June 25th, end of day. Got a second on that motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? Saying and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
If there's further business, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.